Two minutes for an opening statement. And so we're going to go in order, starting with Luis Cano, followed by Deborah Martin, and so on, we'll kind of move down the line. Each candidate will be given two minutes for an opening statement, a two-minute response with the allowance for questions directed to a specific candidate. Each candidate will have three minutes for a closing statement in reverse order of the opening statements. Our timekeeper will notify candidates of their remaining time, available, like 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and stop. And if they comply with the stop, you'll result in you being disqualified from participation. So from here, we'd like to start in two minutes with Luis Cano.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Thanks for showing up, everybody, and thank you, Moni, and the Chamber of Commerce for having this event for us. We really appreciate this, and we're just in response to everybody, and I really appreciate that. So my name is Luis Cano. I'm not a politician. I'm a realtor, and before that, I was a union warehouse worker. I'm also a husband, father, and grandfather. Yes, yeah, yeah, I look pretty young, but I'm still a grandfather. But I'm first, I'm the first running candidate. I am the first-time candidate running because I can see that this community, the First Council District, needs attention, need investment in our local economy, our residents needing housing. We must continue to support our Pomona Police and Fire Department. The fundamental difference between me and anyone else running for the seat is that, number one, they should be facing not only Pomona, but all of California's lacking of housing. I'm a realtor, but also have tremendous experience helping local residents keep their homes during the last economic crisis. That's how I started getting involved in our community, by helping the neighbors avoid losing their homes. And I'm here to go out to help the First District, which needs some investment, needs some attention, and needs some equity. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deborah Martin. As a candidate for Pomona City Council, I bring not just a vision, but also the experience, knowledge, and dedication needed to be the best council member for this community. My track record as a mother, a wife, a city commissioner for 20 years, a business owner for 32 years in Pomona, four years as your former district council member is a testament to my commitment to positive change. I have the institutional knowledge and understanding that it's required to make the real improvements to our neighborhoods, drive economic growth, and create a cleaner, more beautiful Pomona. With your support, I'm ready to bring my knowledge to city health, ensuring that we start having transparency and accountability again, work with public safety to tackle crime, emergency response times, collaborate with regional leaders to come up with real solutions for the homelessness and the mental health. We need to work with the business community on hold to help find incentives for them to want to stay in Pomona, not leave because of the blight, the prostitution, crime, and now the skyrocketing sanitation rates that this council voted in. We need to bring back our press ranger program so our families can feel safe again. Protect all neighborhoods near the ferrets with the traffic, noise, and pollution. I will continue to be accessible for our residents by returning every call, emails, and head town hall meetings. These are some of the key elements of our journey together towards a thriving community. Thank you.
My name is John Nolte. I'm a 30-year resident of the Ascenda District. My past experience has been moving backwards as I was on the district team or commission here in the city of Pomona. Prior to that, I served on the parking commission. And then prior to that, I was a two-term elected official for $3 municipal water district. And recently, I've acted in the community for about six months, collecting signatures and a ballot measure, Measure X, which would reduce the sales tax from 10.25% to 10%, so spent six months out there, got in the red, and it's going to door, develop the whole city, not just one particular area. And I'm here, joined by my daughter, my son-in-law, Pastor Robert Garcia, and Veronica Garcia. Thank you.
Thank you, the Chamber for holding this. I appreciate it. Thank you for all becoming. My name is John Nolte. I'm running for reelection to District One in Pomona. I had moved to Pomona 20 years ago with my young family. We rented a house in Lincoln Park, and I came to sue landlords out of UCLA Law School, and that sort of started my work on community-based organization of work in Pomona. I, after that, was on the board of the Day Labor Center in Pomona. I worked with Pomona Adla in the fight for immigrant rights. I worked on the charter commission in 2010, and then had an opportunity to run for city council in 2012, and did that. Then decided to raise my kids for four years after that to break. During that time, was a founder for Pomona United for Stable Housing to help bring rent stabilization to Pomona. I've been on the board of Latino-Latino Roundtable, working in the community for economic development. And then in 2020, had another opportunity to run for city council and was elected and got right to work. We built hundreds of units, we've green-lighted hundreds of units of affordable housing in the city. I worked right away to establish a rent stabilization ordinance to protect tenants and preserve affordable housing. I've helped bring $5.2 million for public safety, to hire and train police officers and neighborhood outreach workers. If I'm reelected, I want to take advantage of the $22 million grant that we brought to Pomona for climate change, for job creation, to continue economic development in the solar energy industry. I want to make sure we have the solid rent stabilization. I want to preserve our parks and maintain them, and I want to fight homelessness using regional partnerships and lead efforts. So I'd be happy to continue my work on it. Thank you.
So while the mayor candidates, they were time-traveling, we've got another fun question to kind of keep off things, and we'll just give it about 15 seconds or so of response, a little bit fun here. Growing up, what was your favorite musician or band? And if you're brave enough, what was your favorite song?
Growing up was, my favorite band was The Eagles. And to this day, there are many folks that are just 17 years old that feel The Eagles are their best, favorite group. And "Peaceful Easy Feeling" is the song that I really resonate to. Thank you.
I would have a cigarette just off the top of my head and bump into doors or, I'd fire.
As a teenager, definitely went to "Boingo." I actually can't remember the name of the song, but in my senior yearbook, the line I had was darkness can never last too long if you laugh in space. So "Boingo," "Boingo."
So I'm a big music fanatic. I mean, I, you know, I graduated in '89, so I'm a big 80s fan in regards to a lot of music. But one of those that resonates to me, and I saw her, and I saw her over here in, at the fair, at the fair was Donna Summer. Donna Summer, you know, she, "Back in the Seven," means back in the seventies, my dad and my mom would like listen to her on the radio and, and, you know, and all the songs that she, that she just sang. And for me, seeing her at the fair was just awesome. She was 55 years old when I saw her, and, and you could see all of the audience just crying, like literally crying. Even, even Donna Summer was crying when she was like singing her song. She's like, "Oh, my goodness, L.A., L.A.," because she did marry, she did marry somebody from Tennessee, a country singer, by the way. She started singing country before she passed away. It was just the greatest, just to see.
The next two districts, you have some other questions, please. With that, we'll start with John as the first official question. Oh, sorry, John Nolte. If elected, what are your top two priorities that you would work on the first 90 days of leaving the city, and what are your plans to accomplish them?
Well, first of all, elected, I don't believe it would take effect until the runoff's over, which would probably be like in November, but it's kind of like, I get the question. But I presume one of the biggest concerns of the people that I have right now is a lot of the homelessness that's state-based in Pomona. That's one issue. So I would like to convey a meeting or so-called gathering of the city's resources and see what we can do to solve some of the homeless issues that gather in our city, because we think there's a continual demand for them. We need a partnership also with some of our local cities like Auburn, San Luis, and even Carmichael. There's always that rumor that they're pushing their homelessness onto our city and dropping on our doors, you know? So we need to get a regional, something regional going to find out really what's going on with the homelessness, and then take an evaluation of some of the resources that we're standing on homelessness, and finding out within the track record of what kind of products that we're making, a progress report, you know? How are we tackling a lot of the problems of homelessness, what have we accomplished, you know, and so forth? Another issue would be, there's a lot of traffic and speeding cars throughout District One, alleys that aren't paved and so forth, and people would like to see some of those issues happen.
Okay, so two priorities. There's a lot of things I want to work on, but I did think about, since I am currently on the council, what could be accomplished 90 days after March. And I think, one thing I think is urgent is to finish the permanent rent stabilization ordinance that we need to finish. So we have a consultant that has been working on reaching out to the community, both tenants and landlords, and we need to get that report back, and we need to get that passed, that will help us preserve affordable housing, keep people in their homes, which definitely will help with homelessness. That needs to be robust in the sense that we could need a net board that can be a place where tenants can come to complain about things like conditions in their housing, and I think that's, that's great. Another thing that I'd like to work on in 90 days is to engage residents, to develop a specific plan, and identify funding to restore Denisha Park and especially surrounding hills. Just learning more as I've been campaigning about the hills around Denisha Park, I'm concerned about their fire safety. I think that we need funding in order to really transform the hills, and I think engaging the residents that are in that neighborhood, both about how we can raise funds, also looking for grants, and thinking about transforming the hills into something like it used to be, which would be like an arboretum. So a lot of the plants that are there were planted because they were specifically for an arboretum. There's been some discussion, I know, about like maybe an indigenous center there. I think we could, we could start raising money, engaging residents on that right away.
All right, so two things that I would like to do immediately within the next 90 days. Well, the first one, I want to perform a community outreach assessment with residents, businesses, public safety, and local organizations, fully gather information and listen to what specific changes should be made. I certainly have my ideas, but I want to create a working group that includes people of different opinions. We need to listen to everything that's, you know, everyone's opinion and so forth, and just kind of really forward. But immediately begin a housing assessment to determine, this would be number two. Immediate housing assessment to determine how we can attract more affordable housing development in the district. So I know we're talking a lot about rent stabilization and so forth, but we're not talking a lot about homeownership. And to me, you know, once you build homeownership, you invest, you invest into the community and love, and you start building the place where you live now. You know, when you go to the Housing Authority in the city of Pomona, there's a lot of, there's a lot of information in regards to rent stabilization, but there's a down payment assistance program that not a lot of people are knowledgeable about, where down payment assistance program for the city of Pomona, you can get up to $200,000 as a down payment assistance, and there's not a lot of information in regards to that. So I want to bring forward something like that, and there's more down payment assistance to come forward through the state, through the city, and also through the county.
There's so much to talk about. There's so many things to put on the list what we need to do. But before anything, and I do want to say, safety, homeless, and economic growth are my three top priorities. But before we get to that, we need to meet with the city manager, we need to learn the budget inside and out, and see where we can move things around and have accountability for each department in the city. There is not enough accountability what's going on in the departments, whether it is Housing Planning Department, the Public Works Department. There's not a accountability, because if there was, we wouldn't have all these issues that are going on today. When it comes to the homeless, when I was a council member in the past, I sat on many committees trying to have good solutions for the ongoing homeless situation in our city. We came up with Hope for Home, and I'm proud to say I was part of that process. But unfortunately, we sold out to the county with Proxess and H, so that particular shelter is open to any person in our county, not just Pomona folks. So I'd like to work on that, because I know personally homeless individuals that need housing right now, and they, there's nowhere to go. So thank you so much.
So for the next question, we're going to start with Mr. Nolte. And so the question is, long-term owners of industrial properties, distribution-oriented or fulfillment-oriented of industrial uses, in the city of Pomona and their tenants provide good pay and skilled jobs for residents of Pomona and neighboring communities. Some industrial property owners feel there's an unfair treatment towards industrial-oriented development and redevelopment through, even though there are potential benefits such as workforce development, LED certified facilities, and tax revenue to the city to benefit. What would be your approach to address this business community that could potentially promote economic growth and environmental sustainability?
So I think it's important to understand, I think this question is related to the warehouse moratorium that we have in Pomona, because it's hard to know without specifics what people are talking about. I'm going to kind of assume that that's sort of what this is about. So I was in favor of having a warehouse moratorium in Pomona for a period of time, because there are, well, there are benefits that you were, you were talking about. There are risks and potential detriment to warehouses in particular, and some types of industrial development. So as those kinds of uses in the inland empire coming in from Pomona are expanding rapidly, I think it is important for us to take a step back, take a look at the kind of industrial warehouse development that we want in the city, and make some decisions about that strategically. And so that's what we've done, and I think that that was appropriate. We're very close right now to putting out the zoning code, the reformatted zoning code that is in line with the general plan, and that will include new regulations in respect to warehouse and industrial uses. From what I've seen of it, I think that it doesn't shut down those uses. It provides for some warehouse uses, and actually, you know, a fair amount of them. I think that it's a proper balance between sharing the benefits of industrial warehouse use and avoiding the detriment, which could be like pollution, and truck traffic, and effects to our streets, and the fact that lots of these industrial uses are located often very close to low-income neighborhoods. So our new zoning code takes those potential detriments into account, allows for appropriate sizing and appropriate uses, keeps them in areas that are appropriate, and also allows us to enjoy those benefits. So I think that we struck the proper balance.
If you go back to the one, the same word, so pass it on to Luis.
Okay. So warehouse moratorium. So I sat, I literally stood in front of the podium, in front of the dais, and when they did, and this was on December 18, they were talking about the warehouse moratorium. I was totally against it. You know, there's, you know, for, for me, you know, it brings, we need warehouses. There's only 6% of warehouses in, in, in the city of, in the city of Pomona. So when we see the surrounding cities, not even the surrounding cities, people go down right here on First Street, and if, and if you pass, First Street turns into State Street. State Street is, is Montclair. You go from Montclair all the way on to Fontana, you're seeing brand-new warehouses. And these are, these are the, these are the things that we're missing on. We're missing on our economic development, we're missing on tax revenue, we're missing on unemployment. And, and that's basically where I stand on this, you know? We're just missing on a lot of things. I mean, as far as, as far as like, as far as us having like, you know, clean energy or clean, clean air, or something like that. The city has force, for free, which is running in our city, in our city. So before we even talk about warehouses, we've got to talk about that first. But that's our economic development, we need to.
Although we've had two gentlemen answer to the question, can you repeat it again?
Sure, sure. It's a long one. So, "Long-term owners of industrial properties, distribution-oriented or fulfillment-oriented industrial uses, in the city of Pomona and their tenants provide good pay and skilled jobs for residents of Pomona and neighboring communities. Some industrial property owners feel there's an unfair treatment towards industrial-oriented development and redevelopment, even though there are potential benefits such as workforce development, LED certified facilities, and tax revenue to the city to benefit. What would be your approach to address this business community that could potentially promote economic growth and environmental sustainability?"
All right, thank you. Well, first of all, there are some warehouses on mission as we speak that are in jeopardy of never being able to expand. Their company's been there for over 40 years, and with the new specific plan coming in, it's going to change their rules on their property. Very, very successful businesses throughout our city are being threatened with this new specific plan. Moratorium on the warehouses, I am not supportive of a moratorium, but I'm in support of clean, green industries. So how do we do that? Well, I believe that we really were strong when the waste transfer station came in. We wanted to make sure it was a green facility, and we were able to make it happen, and it turned into like a shining star of our commercial zone. So with the right combination of information and expertise, we can make our city a better place. But if we put a ban on stopping all these businesses from coming to our city, how can we ever build a budget? We've got to go back to our budget. Our budget is small, and we need to find other ways to build our budget, and it's through our business community and commercial zone. Thank you so much.
Well, most of this, I hope most of the citizens here are going to stand that. The particular moratorium on warehouses and so forth dragged down for a long period of time, and as a consequence, a lot of these businesses weren't able to, you know, to move forward to fight tax revenue. At the last meeting, there was a hearing on there, there was two votes, you know, that said no. It needed six, seven votes in order to continue that moratorium on warehouses. And that particular night, there was a lot of union people there, there was a lot of businesses there that were really kind of opposed to the ordinance itself, because it was moving along, so it expired. I think, you know, the whole idea of addressing, you know, the issue of aspiration, problems in those streets, pollution, and all that is a good step that I wanted to take forward. And I just, just, you know, I'm pretty dissatisfied that that particular night, it was like around 10:30 at night, that the city council was discussing a very important issue, maybe 10 o'clock, you know? You don't put things of this importance at night like that, that it's so important. And so with this new ordinance that's being, going to be presented to the city in the future, I just have my doubts about if it's going to be, if it's going to work. I hope the both sides, the people you know, the businesses, have time to be informed of what's, what's the contents of it, and so as the environmentalists. Thank you.
And so we're going to end with closing statements for three minutes. So we started from this, left to right, so we'll start with Mr. Nolte on the closing statements.
Thank you. Just real quick, I do want to say it's important to just note that the warehouse moratorium won't be in effect forever, but in fact, it was a temporary measure that we put in place so that we could study the issue and come up with a better approach. That's it, my closing statement. I just wanted to say again, it is an honor to serve on the city council. I'm humbled by that honor. It's, I feel like if you drive around Pomona, you can see that things are changing for the positive. I mean, it's interesting to be here kind of, and so far, the only representative of the current administration. But I do want to say, my, my sense of Pomona is one of optimism. I think that the current council is working together in the same direction, we're rowing in the same direction. That's, that's huge. The first time I was on the council, it wasn't like that. It's been a whole new revelation of leadership, of people who put into practice the compassion that they talk about. That's what Pomona is right now. There are serious problems, and, and, you know, I want to work on homelessness, for example. I think that, you know, talking about regional partnerships is important. Pomona has done a lot for homelessness. We do have home development. We have a police department that works together with public works department to fight homelessness. It's just simply not enough, and it is a regional problem, and we need to, you know, I intend to lead a collaboration with local cities, the relationships that I have, to get them to step up and invest. We need more beds. We can't get people off the street if we don't have beds for them. And I'll make to work to make sure that we have public-private partnerships that come in, that exist. For example, the Eliminations Foundation wants to come there. They could provide hundreds of beds that would allow us to have places for the homeless people to go to get the care. care that they need, and that would allow us to take them off the streets. I think we should do that. West Hope Avenue is going to be completely transformed, we have funding to do that. That's going to help a lot with human trafficking and with bringing businesses and additional housing. We're a housing-first, pro-housing city. We built more housing in Pomona in the last four years than anywhere else probably in the county. And you can see it coming up. We have the gold line coming in, housing is coming in around there and will continue to. The opportunities for economic development are enormous. This twenty-two million dollar grant that we got is going to provide opportunities to build the solar industry, it's going to provide street transportation for hundreds of kids so that they can go visit downtown Los Angeles. I am excited to continue, if you'll allow me, to, to work on the city council, to be part of this team, to continue pushing forward this vision, to make Pomona even more beautiful than it is. I'm proud to be a part of Pomona. I love this town. It is the place where I raise my hand, and I'm here for it.
I'd just like to thank the chamber for sponsoring this event. And I just want to point out that we have very important measures that we need to be voted upon this March fifth. What is Measure P, that's the one for sales tax extension, you know, forever. In other words, the way it's being collected right now is going to go on forever. And the other one is Measure X. Measure X is the one to reduce the sales tax here in the city of Pomona, which had been humanized by staff and the people as being negative. But what a lot of people don't understand is that the measure was put on valid. Measure X is just for, we can take pause to reevaluate how our city has been moving forward, you know, with all this revenue coming in. And Measure X would reduce the sales tax a ten percent, but that does not mean that the sales tax could be raised again, but for a specific purpose, you know? Say if the people wanted to do it for homelessness, or they wanted to do it for streets improvement, we would have that opportunity to earmark that money for a period of time. But a tax that goes on forever is something you won't have that much accountability on, so I hope people just take into consideration of that. If people say no and vote Measure P down, the city could find itself in some brilliant and devastating economic situation. Unless the city has really improved to the point where they are really bringing in revenue, they don't be okay without that tax. If not, we're going to be in deep trouble. Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank the chamber for hosting. This is a wonderful event inside hometown USA. We've been doing this for over twenty-five years. So thank you so much to me and everyone else that was part of planning this. A difficult event to plan, so thank you so much. I also want to thank everyone in the audience for giving their time and effort to be here tonight, to get to know all of us. It's really important to know your candidates, and so you can feel comfortable when you make that vote on March fifth. With that said, my husband, my four children, and my granddaughter. If that wasn't for them, making me happy every day and encouraging me to do what I want to do in life, I'm just grateful for all of that. And last but not least, I'm grateful for the community that brought me here tonight, because if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't have been on the ballot. They called me for countless months, encouraging me and saying, Deborah, you still have a lot of good work to do, and we need you back. So with that said, I want to thank every person in this room and the whole community that's reached out to me to say, please, Deborah, we want you back. Last but not least, I just have a few things to say, and this is the reasons why, this is from the community, why they feel they need me back. In my absence from office, our council decisions have imposed the following. A tax hike, increased water rates, investing into a failing energy company, sold our beloved sanitation department to Athens, and then granting of a monopoly contract resulting in a staggering trash rates of twenty percent for the residents, and a skyrocketing three hundred percent for businesses. This is the financial burden that is going to be passed on to every single one invested in our community. They hired and fired the city manager that cost the taxpayers $600,000. They are considering breaking a six-year-old land trust that is with Palm Lake Golf Course to sell it to the developers. Yes, we need housing, I support it. But this property was donated to the city of Pomona by a family with a commitment from the city never to sell it to developers, only to keep it green space for our residents. Previous attempts by the council, no, excuse me, previous attempts by the council was the-
We have our time, but stop. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. And last but not least, Bruce Connor. And you know, and I want, I want to say the same thing as Deborah Barnes. She, she said, thank you for everybody that showed up, because, you know, we all have tedious things that we need to do and so forth, and, and, you know, your, your time is very greatly appreciated. And like I said, you know, Momo, and, you know, we love you, we love you, Dan. I'm glad that we brought everyone together as well. Everyone that showed up here on the panel as well, you know, I mean, you know, I like, I like the fact that you guys shared your thoughts, your visions, and, and so everyone can hear exactly what, what you guys are reading. So I really appreciate you guys showing up as well. And so I've been living here since nineteen ninety-seven. I've done a lot of stuff out here, you know? Most people, they ask for change, or they want to make a difference. All I'm asking is for progress. I want progress in the city of Pomona. I want my city to thrive like the surrounding cities around us. And, and that's the only reason I'm, I'm here. That's the only reason. So I, so if you want more information in regards to me, you can visit, you can visit me on my, on my, you know, on my website, countforcouncil.com, that's panel, the number four, council.com. And I'm going to be available here for any questions that you guys have. So search for me, I'll be here. I'll be there, and look over your shoulder, let me.